...
Should I get a chance to read the minutes?
A little bit, yeah.
Make a motion to... Yeah.
Yeah, second.
Approve the minutes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills?
Should I go?
All in favor?
Aye.
We got a one-time adjustment for Lawson in the amount of two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and eleven cents. And we have a swimming pool adjustment for Trissler in the amount of one-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Make a motion that we okay these?
I'm saying it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, water.
They're very, very close to getting that planned operation. They have some communications issues right now with well tubes. They just got water in it, it's just not pumping yet.
Okay. How about the sewer?
Sort of been doing good last week or so.
Well, we want to sure, I'll basically run that line from the well hole to that sewer plant where we can put the generator in if the electricity's out.
Docking station.
Docking station, yeah, they're just gonna do that, aren't they?
Yeah, we approved it.
Yeah, we approved it. Don't even do it.
Well, we just wouldn't be any good to have that generator, that plant.
No water going to it.
No water going to it.
It's up and running, so...
So both roads going now?
Not on a new plan, just on the old plan. Well, only one well on the old plan.
Well, three's in the new plan.
Uh...
Well, three for the new plan.
Well, three's still on the old plan.
Two in the new one.
Can't get the new plan to communicate well. We're waiting on it.
Except, once I get that done, they're gonna be able to heat, heat the wells.
Right, yeah.
But you guys ought to make sure they, you're trying wells around it every six months.
They have to every, like, every three months or something like that to...
Well, they would be in charge of that, so...
Just to say, I want to set this, maybe for our...
We may have to expand the parking area outside the wastewater plant gate to accommodate, to get the generator out, to get it turned around. The lines have just pulled out there and backed all the way back up.
Right.
Good truck, I would do it.
I can do it. I don't want to.
Should be able to fill in something and make a little turnaround there or something where...
Yeah.
They'll build a pad.
We have lots of fuel right now, tons of fuel.
Okay. What's a sewer line location? I feel... That we need a deposit on that. Instead of just letting them hook up a sewer, hook up to a sewer line.
It'd be okay. If they were to hook that tiny house up to the sewer line, it'd be okay.
Be okay, yep.
What about water meters for them?
Like, okay.
I hate to say anything, but the way that camper field was sitting there parked.
I know.
It looked very suspicious.
I know.
And he's already mentioned the new, the meter that's out of the cemetery does not being used. About tapping into that, remember, though, or...
No.
You know?
It's a letter.
Something's going on back there, but we don't.
What I, the way I see it, you need to find your ordinance on your tiny houses.
Right here.
And take a turn, say, here it is. So, if you're, you can't hook this tiny house up to this sewer line.
Once the tiny house unit is placed properly on a site within the four corporate limits of the Town of Gosport, it must immediately connect to the town's public water main and sanitary water system, and the appropriate installation fees paid.
Well, he'll, he'll try to say that was just put in before the ordinance was passed. I don't know.
No. His grandfather didn't with the old existing buildings, but the ordinance was changed, what, two years ago?
I think when the building was really put in, it was for storage.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, twenty-three.
Yeah, it was two years ago.
I think when the building was put in, it was for storage. Now, there's a major...
We've got to pay.
So, if they, if the ordinance says they can hook up here, they all have to pay a hook-up fee for the sewer.
Yeah.
Square footage is not, isn't big enough, it's supposed to be like four hundred square feet.
I thought it had to be a certain square feet.
Four-hundred-and-forty square feet or less in floor area excluding lofts. A tiny house is a dwelling unit, but not a mobile home, a camper, a recreational vehicle, or an Amish cabin.
They're supposed to be scrapped down, too.
The habitable space and hallways in a tiny house shall have a ceiling height of not less than six feet eight inches. Bathrooms, toilet rooms, and kitchens shall have a ceiling height of not less than six feet four inches. Obstructions including, but not limited to, beams, girders, ducts, and lighting shall not extend below these minimum ceiling heights. However, ceiling heights in the loft shall be permitted to be less than six feet eight inches.
Second, all right, I don't think the building's for, for a square feet.
I don't think... I say we may owe him a copy of this. At least.
May I owe him a copy of it, and then go to there? I ain't got far to dig in the sewer line yet. It's on, so I ain't done something.
Have they already hooked into it?
No.
I ain't done it yet, I ain't found it yet.
Do you want me to add on the list of the bees, the, like, the connect bees?
Yes.
The news about how much it costs?
How much it costs for the filter?
Yep, and the water.
Maybe you want somebody else's...
So, the minimum square footage yours can be used as residence.
So, make that for each one.
Yeah.
Not for all.
No.
And we still charge them a thousand dollars if it didn't go up, or that's what I have to pay.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if they want to call six or seven up, it'd be whatever it is each pack.
Yep.
This will more accounts of the town.
Milestone is currently working on handicap ramp and sidewalks connecting to the new streets coming shortly. Streets update?
Pardon?
Streets update?
Well, putting in new curves.
Yeah.
Soon enough, right behind that's supposed to be paving. Everybody waiting for it? I think you put the curves in.
They'll pave after they get them curves in.
Pardon?
They'll pave after they get the curves in.
I figured it'd be next week before they stop coming in. They, they got a really late start today, they didn't get started till noon or more because they can get concrete and show up.
They got all the curbs dug out though, didn't they?
I had to look, I think so.
Yeah, they got one mine up there dug out.
Yeah.
Was it you or Vic mentioned to me last week about the salt and sand supply?
Me.
You?
I just wanted to get some early.
I thought we should have.
Before they run out?
We have some salt and sand mixed.
Yeah.
Enough to fill up the salt box one or two times maybe. But I don't know.
Will it spread it with the salt in it?
Uh?
Will it spread it with the salt in it?
Yeah, it's, I'd make some of the sand right now.
Okay, so it is working out right?
Yeah.
It seemed like with the salt, it didn't work, got it crumbled up or something?
It froze up last year several times.
I think if it was just salt, it froze up right.
Oh, but mixed with the sand?
Well, and we also discovered the roof back when the salt's being sorted is leaking.
Leaking.
That water, I mean, we're just getting sorted if it's going weak.
Yeah.
So, we need to add water in.
We could pop the top. Great. For what it's sold, okay?
Gravesden roof.
Oh, Gravesden roof. Who's in charge now?
Tim, early, Tim.
Well, how about we fix the roof first before we start?
Yeah, that's gonna be a fun job. I'll take five up there.
Okay.
Do we have materials to fix the roof? It's metal, right?
Yes, metal roof.
Have we got stuff that we can patch it with?
Yeah, I'm sure we do, we got, we got the retard.
And other material to put down over it?
More likely it's just a lot of metal roofs, the wind, they come down, the holes still out.
Yeah. So, it's not like rusty holes or something in it?
I think so.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
Not like the old metal around it that was all eaten before?
I don't know.
So, we're not gonna work or any sand or salt yet then?
No, do not yet.
I'll be this project down up there on Saturday north. I'll try to get down there and work on area for the, all sand and salt for the corner. That job, I'll just have it, the notice should be done tomorrow. Cool. And you guys can do whatever you wanna do with it.
Once again, we received a letter in the Dropbox. Dear Gosport Town Council, After watching the new video on YouTube channel Town of Gosport, Indiana, I feel that it is necessary to write to you about some of the things I know about the chief of our volunteer fire station. I have family members that are in the fire department that have stopped going on fires in the meetings at the station because of the fire chief. One of the videos I heard, a couple people say, "With the new state laws and the time it takes for training, it's hard to get new volunteers." If this is so, then why does the chief treat the volunteers with disrespect? My family members that are in the fire department have said they would come back if the town relieved the chief of his duties. The fire station has failed to the wayside for many years now. Hope the town council finds a solution before more members of the department leave. Sincerely, a concerned resident of the Town of Gosport. What was the... Deal with the ISO?
We had a meeting with Dale, and we were, I was under the impression that we needed twelve hours a year. After talking with Dale, we had to have twelve, or we had to have one man hour per member per month. So, the twelve members on the department had to have twelve man hours of training.
Okay.
Dale told us we had some other plan and a roster, a training roster, and I've done that, and it's been accepted. And he said he wants me in three months for the training roster, or the training schedule for that. Basically, for training roster, make sure we're staying with the public man hours a month.
And did our ratings drop?
The, they will drop from six to seven because they changed one of the grade things.
What percentage would that be in, in the insurance rate, do you know?
Shouldn't hardly be anything.
Did this on?
You just want one, 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 not six.
And down you know.
The pumps on them, but they only run one for fires. So, they didn't count the second one, which made us lose.
On seven percent, what, what percent?
Use the truck.
When it go up?
I don't know exactly, all I can tell you is I talked to a retired insurance agent.
Yeah.
And he said that each percentage point, or e, not percentage point, but each drop could be as much as ten to twelve percent.
Ten to twelve percent higher?
So, but it's gonna go up ten percent regardless if it stays what it is or just the cost of it.
That's every year, anything?
Not ten, seven.
Okay.
We have to have ninety plus in order to be, we're always to pass one, but it's impossible. We don't have the right equipment for all that.
And some of the things that we discussed in that meeting, to me, is they're, they're trying to push for a paid department. I mean, it's not, that's way out of it. Pretty much everybody's pushing for a paid department.
We just don't have...
I'm well aware. I'm well aware.
These people can't afford their water bills.
I understand. I mean, I've been preaching for years, we've gotta do something. Nothing is done.
So, basically, in three months, he wants to see training records that the fire department's doing now?
For what I submitted, I submitted him a training schedule for, training for running each month. And then I, every quarter, I've got to send him the roster. To show that we done twelve hours, twelve man hours.
Does Dustin have a radio? Did we get an application?
Yes, he turned one in, Alex.
Let him on the night, too?
Yeah. He turned one in the other day. Probably, I think it was. So, the other gentleman didn't turn one in, there was another, oh, what's his name?
From the Bay Bridge?
No, that's Daniel. Uh, I don't think I've heard from him either.
I did.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, he's still filling it out.
Okay. There was another gentleman that, oh, God, he was working on the house across the street from the shelter house.
Randy Loft House.
That's it.
Uh, he hasn't brought one back yet, has he?
If he will, okay. So, you wanna get back on the truck, then, or what's going on?
Yeah. How soon can we get this ISO rating back up?
Uh, through this process, we, everything, if anything, will come back up until we do our next assessment, which we've here for years. And they aren't coming, I don't know the way they change, the way they break, it may never come back up. They change again from now on, that, that time, it may go, go from a seven to an eight next time.
Except, if we were in Texas, we would've got extra points, it was automatic.
Yeah, but they got a Texas...
They got a trickle down there, so everybody in Texas gets extra points for that. We're not there.
So, what happens is get points, all right? A lot of things will help us get points, we just don't have the money to do. Because you're gonna have to have certain equipment on every truck, which we don't have the money to put along with, we're putting on there. And you'll have to have four eyes for a run. You're gonna have to have all three trucks out on every run. I mean, there's a lot to it.
Well, can you...
I guess we could get towed off, hook them to the truck, pull them with each other. I mean, there's a lot to it, it's just, it ain't something that... I mean, if we had more money, we could probably buy the equipment we need to put on all the trucks, but...
Need people to operate it, too.
Yeah, I need people to operate them, need people who...
Yeah, come get those.
Have at least four people on every run. And mutually, if the trucks don't come out, mutually, if they're still not coming.
See, that's a mighty, uh, fan, or I think it is.
So, we asked him, and he said mutually, it's not for, doesn't help us.
Right.
So, why couldn't we take one of the tankers and put it out here at the old fire station when we're on a fire run? And have it running?
I mean, we discussed in the meeting that we need to get them all three out the door. How we're gonna do it, I don't know, but we gotta be able to get them all three out the door. Because they didn't do it with credit for the white issue, because they don't run on structure fires.
It's used regularly, but not for structure fires.
Right, not for structure.
Why doesn't run on structured fires?
It runs for, it's all set up for the rescue, for the car wrecks and car wrecks and stuff like that. It's got all your, all the rescue tools and stuff on there for quick events for fires, but it's got small, tiny, all that.
All right.
And it'll maybe help us, it's house fires, car fires on the pound, bill fires on the pound, house fires. But they very don't.
They're fires.
Magic, not structure fire, they very much structure fire. Fire, fire, I agree a hundred percent, well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I, I agree a hundred percent. Me and Mike brought that up, and he said structure fires wasn't canceled.
They have such a thing as a reserve fire, as a fire fighter? There's a full firefighter?
I don't know.
Such a thing as a reserve firefighter?
I'm, I'm right. If we had the right insurance, we could do a cadet program for young kids, that would be outrageous.
Because you got a big life in town every day.
Yep.
Because I know Owen Valley has a cadet program, and they said the insurance has got some out of, out of, like, one of those last kids out, they're done, they're not doing no more. Yeah, I hate to say it, but everybody's pushing for full-time departments anymore.
We just can't afford it.
I'm not disagreeing with that either. And you got, I mean, the last fifteen years of open regulations for the fire departments have changed tremendously. Back when Ronnie was chief, we had to, about here, I mean, you had to file a report with the state. We didn't have to put a lot of that stuff we have to do now. I mean, the rules and regulations have changed what we have to do tremendously in the last fifteen years. That didn't get any better. Every time the state makes a new rule, we gotta follow it.
I think the state, they want the, they want everybody to have to be volunteers and stuff, so they make it so rough on you.
State's pushing to do away with volunteers.
They're doing away with these volunteers. You gotta go through the same class.
That's why the state's pushing to pay the trustees, to make it easier for volunteers.
I think the state ought to come back to, well, the volunteers gotta do so much classes to everything a paid firm does.
Yeah.
So, that's just my, so, I ain't doing that no more.
You look at the fire burning, they've changed it three times.
I did five years.
Changed it by mandatory and fire one and fire two to fire something and announce back to fire one and two and mandatory.
Has.
All right, you did. How we doing on the burnout house?
We got one little left.
Oh, the one we're working on?
Yeah.
I'll finish it tomorrow.
Then we got three of them.
It's only about ten and a half dumpsters.
Two.
Ten and a half dumpsters full. I'd say one, I get tomorrow, we put the full.
Have we already filled two dumpsters? Oh, I didn't realize that.
They've filled two. Yeah. So, I won't be able to get that done tomorrow. Um... I don't know what you guys are planning on, the rest of these houses, the burnt part and stuff. But there, I, I know that, when this happened, I took them up there on Jefferson Street and stuff.
That's a scat house, you can't do anything with that.
I didn't know if we could.
I don't think, can we, Don?
Oh, we didn't send them a letter. Patrick sent a letter saying that, and you cleaned up.
I'm gonna send no insurance, it's just getting in.
Yeah, because they called you when Lawson...
Yeah, it's in there, yeah.
The best scare one leaving in there, and I was working, I couldn't, so... So... That's kind of an ISO.
Yeah.
But that's a state house, so, yes, I would say their insurance, though, I'd say I cleaned it up real quick, I would say, once I get good pay. They just gotta wait for insurance to come, so their investigation's pretty busy. Yeah, there's some to be guarded, aren't there?
Yeah.
Get an old mess out there.
And that empty lot.
Empty lot.
On Main Street.
Build the block, block to the zoo.
Oh, with the other house burned down, it's just rubble there.
Thank you, man.
Okay, we need to set a date for the leaf pickup.
Wouldn't they go on fire? They don't draw fire.
Oh, no.
Um...
Well...
Maybe December first?
Maybe.
No. I'd say Thanksgiving weekend.
Thanksgiving weekend or the week of Thanksgiving?
The end of, weekend of Thanksgiving.
So, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth and thirtieth?
Be the last.
We already got, we already have some out on the street, up on Main Street. Hopefully, after tomorrow, we can get the leaf box in the truck and get it ready. Going around. I give Victor something to do.
Yeah.
So, we need to figure that, we have to have a starting date and a finishing date, right?
We'll start this week, well, start Monday. The table's off Monday.
Twentieth?
You want any leaves down by then?
There's, my whole yard's full of them.
Oh, I, I got a few.
Leaves up down on Main Street.
And then end it on Thanksgiving weekend?
Yeah, the last pickup will be end of November. Because I've been pushing it in, getting everything ready for snow and stuff.
I think they should pass the ordinance. No tall grass or leaves on the street, period. It gives them a storm drain, makes mess.
So, we're saying before Thanksgiving or the weekend after?
Weekend after.
Weekend after.
The twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth?
So, no.
It's a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Sunday's the thirtieth.
The thirtieth. You guys gonna do it on a Sunday?
Do this.
Friday, we're gonna stay on that.
Twenty, Friday, twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth, last day.
Day after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-eighth. Thanksgiving's the twenty-seventh.
That'd be November, right, was the last day?
Yeah, November twenty-eighth.
And then we're gonna start it till the twentieth?
Yep, Monday. Make a motion that we set that plan in motion?
Sure.
True.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we are on to quote for a box up for storage down by the water treatment plant. And we got two quotes. One is a forty, what?
You got two quotes for two different times in the same company.
Oh, okay.
And in all honesty, it's not like it has to, decision has to be made tonight because you're not really ready to buy it.
Okay.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna put where the old treatment plant is, how long you think it's gonna be before it's gone? Dale, if they get to one new or a plant that's running, there's no reason letting it start on the right way. Gotta get the new plant working and make sure it works.
How long will it take them, take that down?
It's gonna be a couple weeks, we have.
I mean.
Um, it's supposed to have to go on Friday.
One day or two days?
If you. Well, I don't know how long it'll take to tear it down, cut the baby.
Filter tanks are gonna take a minute.
They're tall.
Yeah.
They're gonna cut them.
I was gonna say.
Filters.
They're gonna be tall. You can pour the colics around.
I would push it, push it out there.
Are we gonna request that we can take ownership of pump holders and stuff that are in the building?
I don't know, see, I thought we were going to, uh, network.
Tell the good people to send somebody.
Yeah, because there's a lot of stainless steel in there that's worth quite a bit. I think most, most of it's stainless in there, I believe.
No, no stainless in that plant.
No?
No.
They just, you just paint it, or paint it over?
No.
They'll paint it with cast iron.
Is anything interchangeable with the new plant?
No.
Yeah.
Of course not.
Yeah.
You would believe I was different. It is totally metal.
Right. Hate to put away something that works.
Yeah.
It is easy. Well, I'd say you take your key, couple, some of that motor's just in there. Because if you put it back for something, and be another town, something that's got a motor, needs a motor.
Right.
Advertise it and.
We'll have the container to put it in, right?
Yeah, right. Put it in the shop. Uh, it, it's, it depends on what the contract is. There is contract.
I know they're supposed to remove everything, but as far as us keeping some of it, I'm not a hundred percent positive.
I can't remember what they told us when we were down there.
Brad told Travis.
Yeah, give you an idea.
Yeah, Travis would know.
I was.
They just have doors on one end.
Mm-hmm.
That's just.
So you just want to tape it last till the next meeting? Well, I have a better idea when Dale's gonna be out of the way.
Yep.
Give any thought?
Yeah. Standing there, on thirty.
I'll do it.
Give any thought to buying a second vehicle for the utility department?
Do that.
Have you given any thought to buying a second vehicle for the utility department?
I completely forgot about it, Troy, to be honest with you. We'll bring that up at the next meeting too.
Okay. Go for it, we'll do well as well.
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, okay.
What I'd like to be Mike is get a utility truck and.
Box on the bed that's.
It's kind of boxing stuff where you put all your tools and stuff in it, keep them in, in, in the truck stuff that have to go down. So we can keep all our tools and stuff in it, meters and stuff, that way they ain't going back and forth to shop, having to get stuff. It's all, it's all about trucking, it's that they're, it don't have to be something great because it ain't gonna be going out of town, it's gonna be staying here in town. Use a truck that got power and get parts and stuff. We can cut, cut models down on that, this on truck. Just get us a good use utility truck, it's got.
Guessing you've been looking already, or?
I had my look in, but I didn't get it.
Yeah, service in here did.
Say, that is something we really need right at the moment. It's something we can think about by next spring. It'd be nice.
You'll be in that golf cart all winter.
Don't pay attention to him.
Put your boots on.
Before you show. Be right back. Somebody locked the door up. We'll get one of theirs.
I haven't been there yet. Haven't been here in yet.
Not yet, yes, I.
So can we go ahead and get enough residential meters to finish out the meter replacement?
Look, I have many's left over there.
There is none left over.
There is none.
We've got to pay part of the docking station.
So that was the remainder of it then?
Yeah.
Four, two of the money left.
Then we figure that for you to beat.
Yeah.
And I think the meters is like right at twenty-six thousand?
Yeah, when Travis was in the office this week, um, he told me that he was going to double check with Lori to see if there's enough, even if we just get half. So part of it could be used, so he's gonna check Lori to see if there's any money left to go towards.
We're gonna need them.
Yeah, so regardless, you know, I didn't know if you want to weigh on Travis to get an answer because that could take, but Lori will be in town for the, did the town say you know Lori's gonna be in town?
What?
Lori.
Travis tell you when Lori's gonna be in town?
I think it may be Thursday, she will be here all day.
Yeah. We've got quite a few days to come down to that place.
He said that she might stop by the office, so if she does, then if I'm here, he can talk to her. Or I can ask, but regardless, we have to.
Yeah, nice to get more, get them in before that brother gets here.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we do that.
Take a look at the, go into the residential meters and then we'll.
Yeah, and we'll worry about the business.
Second. Do your second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your second. Before winter hits, can we go ahead and fly back, when they put back in the back home?
Yeah.
I keep toward one of those. We'll get your truck next Friday on Friday.
Maybe.
Maybe. They don't get a road down first, I'm pushing stuff.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.